I would like to do this through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Take your roll, please.
O'Connor.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
Cormick.
Here.
Leber.
Here.
Oggett.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right, we have a presentation by the Hudson Dog Owners Association on the proposed Hudson Dog Park. If you'd like to come forward, please, identify yourself.
Sure.
Name and address.
Yes.
Happy moment.
Anne Wasmond, can you hear that? I'm at 2017 Stone Pine Avenue, and I am the Chair of the Hudson Dog Owners Association. We're thrilled to have met our fundraising goal of $20,000 and are happy to present that to the city toward the creation of a dog park in Hudson. And we are confident this is going to be a wonderful addition to the city park system here in Hudson. Our association has planned various fundraising events over the last approximately year. We've organized a doggedy fun run with Hudson Middle School students and teachers. We've had a Stars Golf Tournament. We've done grocery bagging, restaurant partnerships, and have also had various businesses too in the Hudson area who have donated to the park. We'd really like to see, in the near future, the council and the finance committee move forward with identifying a funding source for the remaining costs of the park. When I, when we started working with Tom Zulley a couple of years ago on potential locations, we did generate, or we did receive one rough estimate between $35,000 and $40,000 for the creation of the park. So, in addition to that, we've also, we received a $5,000 Spark grant from the Hudson Community Foundation. The stipulation of that is that we must spend that before October of this year. So, we definitely don't want to see that $5,000 disappear. Our most recent event at the Ultimissimo, they have the annual charity dog wash, the Ultimissimo Dog Wash. We were the recipient of that this year, and they raised $2,000 for the dog park. And so, tonight, we also want to present you with an additional $2,000 toward the park on top of the $20,000, so we're hoping that encourages a little more action. And you, I know in the packets, I think you received a proposed plan, again, not set in stone, but that's kind of a concept of what we, what we have discussed and could see at the Grandview Park location. We'd like to come back in two weeks with a more concise, detailed plan so that that could be furnished to potential contractors and could send out, call for bids. And just, I think we've mentioned this in the past, but we've, our association is committed to continuing the support for the dog park once it's created. We will have an annual fundraiser. We hope we will carry on the doggedy fun run so it become, becomes a bigger event. So, we'll be around to take care of that. And we have a Facebook page with over 1,200 followers, so we have a lot of people in the community who want to see this park happen, and they want to take care of that. So, anyway, thank you very much for having us.
Well, thank you very much, and a nice job. You did great work on that.
Awesome.
Pleasure to have you here. So, what I would like to do then is, unless there's objections, send this over to Public Works and Committee, and let's start working on trying to figure out the money.
Okay.
That work for everybody?
Sure.
Okay? Thanks. Next is citizens' comments. Anybody have any comments? Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Discussion possible action on consent agenda items.
To approve the minutes from the regular session meeting of June 19th, 2017. To approve claims in the amount of $368,041.19. Contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and successful completion of the background check. To approve the issuance of 13 operator licenses that are on file in the clerk's office.
Can you pull item C, please?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Pull item C.
Pull item C. To approve temporary Class B beer license and temporary Class B retailer license for August 3rd, 2017 for the Visual Arts Council, the FIP Center for the Arts at 109 Locust Street. To approve a conditional use permit to Hudson Gateway LLC to allow lighting for the proposed stadium facilities at the St. Corey Meadows redevelopment site as recommended by the Plan Commission with conditions. To approve the conditional use permit for the Hudson YMCA for a temporary use structure as recommended by the Plan Commission with conditions. And to approve a conditional use permit submitted by Hoffen Barrel Brewing Company as recommended by the Plan Commission with conditions. And to select and approve a letter of engagement with Freiburger in connection with proposed St. Corey Meadows redevelopment project as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Do you need that poll, or are we going to just use Freiburger? Did you say that?
Heads up to. That was the recommendation from the Finance.
Right, it's a recommendation from the Finance Committee for the Freiburger.
Okay. Move for approval.
Second.
Got motion second for approval. Roll call.
Morsette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Cormick.
Yes.
Leber.
Yes.
Oggett.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, and then we go back to item C, regular operator's licenses.
I recuse myself.
Yep. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Unfinished business, discussion of possible action on ordinance number 11-17 amending section 255-14.h to create a B4 central business district and amend section 255-24 permitted uses, section 255-25 dimensional requirements, and section 255-48 off-street parking requirements. Right?
Sure, I can go if anyone has any questions on the legal review. Last time I asked that it be postponed because of issues relating to the fact that the ordinance doesn't specify any permitted uses. It, all uses are by conditional use permit, and that has been a subject of litigation in Wisconsin with a court case finding that that's not permitted generally. And so, I think the ordinance can be tightened up to alleviate the concerns that were raised in that case, and I think it prob, it should be because it can be as a way of avoiding potential litigation on that ordinance. So, that, that's my recommendation, is that it be referred back to the Plan Commission just to address those issues I raised in the memo.
Yeah, but we discussed it, and we, and I agree as well. Obviously, this has been in the works for quite some time. I think it's important that we get this right, understanding that it is that transitional zoning district between that B3 area and our residential areas in the community, so.
I'll move back to Plan Commission. Ordinance number 11-17.
Second. Randy?
I'll move it back to Plan Commission.
Oh.
Ordinance 2017. Is that what you want?
Yep.
Is that the one?
What was the number?
11-17.
11-17.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's what I'm recommending, is that it be referred back to the Plan Commission to tighten up those areas that were a problem for the court.
Okay, all right.
And I think I identified some things that the Plan Commission can do.
Okay. So, we got a motion, was there a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Let's see. Discussion possible action on applications received for Class B liquor and fermented malt beverage license.
Just kind of update everybody, and I think you received the emails. As of right now, the proposal with the neighboring townships is still $50,000 with the town of Troy and $100,000 with the town of Hudson. There's been no changes to that?
No, I talked with Jeff Johnson, and he polled his members up there, and they said they're sticking with $100,000. And what he said is that they really have no desire to sell a license. I talked with Ray Knapp down at Troy, and he said that he would get back to me. He was going to talk to his folks down there as well. The reason, you may recall that they put a deadline on their offer to us of $50,000 for a license. And he said that the reason that they put that deadline there was not a drop dead date for us, but they were just testing the waters to see if $50,000 was a reasonable price, and they would revisit the issue at that deadline if we didn't have any takers for the $50,000. So, that was the reason for that deadline. So, they intended to revisit it. There's some potential there perhaps to be able to continue to, or to be able to work with Troy on this, but nothing for sure in stone, no guarantees.
And they were offering one?
I think it was one, yeah.
And?
So, and I wanted to get the-
Does that become ours then, or?
Beg your pardon?
If somebody ends up getting it for $50,000, does that become the City of Hudson's?
Yes, there would be, you'd have an agreement whereby they transfer it that no license fee, no money is transferred until the city approves issuance of that license, and then at the fee established by the town, and then that fee gets paid to the town. And after that, the fee drops back to the regular license fee established by statute, which is basically $500 for the intoxicating and $100 for the combination beer intoxicating liquor.
So, and of course, we still have, you know, another avenue. I don't know how productive it might be, but going to the state legislature and asking for some type of change to the law or exception.
And I have had a conversation with Sheila again.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at doing it based on market conditions. Now, whether it gets any traction or not, I have not heard yet.
Okay. So, in the meantime, we've got people out there waiting, and they need to have some type of closure one way or another on this issue, some of them do. And so, I wanted to get it back on the agenda and bring it up and see what your, what your thoughts are.
Well, I agree, and I'd like to see, I'd like to see the local as my, because it's a new business, a startup business. I appreciate the other three as well, but my, I would like to, I'm going to move that we grant the license to the local for his startup business, the Local Connection LLC. I think he's been pretty patient as well.
I'll second that, that's kind of where I left off too, because they're, that location has been empty now for a long time, and without that, there will be no new business. I mean, the other businesses currently function, so maybe not the best reasoning, but I tend to agree.
Other thoughts?
Well, the same thing that I said before, we've got two businesses that have been in business for quite a while, and, you know, they've got a track record of doing what they said they would do. So, I don't know why we can't consider them, it's just a bad situation. But there's a motion on the floor, so.
Anybody else?
If you, just quickly reviewing the criteria that we have that we're supposed to use to aid us in judging, they, they meet more of these than the other locations, except for perhaps Keys. There's a toss-up there, they're, they're pretty close.
Well, for what it's worth, and it is a tough situation, it's difficult, it's, it's just a difficult situation. I kind of, I guess, I come down on the side of the movie theater right now, and I say that because the other two restaurants that are looking for a full license are operating fine with the license that they have with respect to Jeremy, and I love to see new businesses open, and I know that it's a significant investment. But I look at that Hudson Theater, and I say, we've got a business here who is contributing $115,000 in taxes. They employ 40 people, and they have a competitive problem. Their competition can hurt them drastically by having the liquor licenses that they have cross the river, and they're losing, they're losing some business to those, to their competitors, and we've got a business with a great track record that needs a license to be competitive. And so, like I say, for what it's worth, that's, that would be my take on it.
My only comment to that would be that if they were to set up a separate Wisconsin corporation, they could easily get a liquor license. And that, it's, it may sound like work, but they still can get one no matter what happens here, so.
I think that because they, I don't know their complete situation on that. I know that they've got theaters throughout, you know, the country, I think, and, but certainly throughout the metro area, and I think that they need to be incorporated where they're at. But, you know, that's, that's probably right. I mean, we know that if they were incorporated over here, they'd be able to get, at least get the beer and wine license.
That's right.
I thought it was just the wine that-
Well, the wine is what they're-
But we could, we could change the-
The beer.
Ordinance for the beer.
On the restaurant requirement, is what you're, yeah. You can't change the incorporation on the wine.
Right.
That's statutory.
So, we could at least help them with that, so that they could serve beer in the theater.
I think my concern with the theater is that you've got a real mix of people, back and forth, kids and families, and I don't remember any discussion about how that would be managed and how it would be controlled, so that-
Well, they had had, we had, you may recall, because I had asked that question. When I first heard that, I thought, this could be a nightmare for the police for enforcement, you know, and to which point they were saying that if people want to, if kids in particular want to come in with booze, they do it anyway. They're not going to spend the money at the, at the bar, you know? And I don't know if you guys have been to any of the theaters. I was at one over in Minnesota, and I was shocked that they had the bar that they had and that they had the business at the bar that they had. So, I guess it didn't come as a big surprise that our theater was going to come along asking for something similar.
The one that I was at, they were serving in the theater, you know, by a staff person. So, it was, I didn't experience the bar piece of that, so, which is, I assume that's their intent here, is to have a bar.
I don't know how they were going to do it. I really don't know.
I think we want to see liquor licenses for all of them, and I'm kind of landing to, how do we make that decision as being maybe the date of the application for-
So, the first three responded to the publication in the paper. You know, there were different dates, but they were all published at the same time. You know, they were all presented at the same time, those first three.
Gotcha.
I mean, there were a couple that were days before that, but because of the timing and with the holidays, they were all published at the same.
Gotcha.
And then you, there was no decision made at that first meeting, and then Jeremy submitted his at that time then, because it was still an open license.
Sure.
Because Tom had asked about that today, too.
Any further discussion? Anybody? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Wait a minute, I lost, what are we voting? There's a motion.
Grant the license to Randy's motion.
All right, I didn't realize it was a motion.
Okay, take the vote again? Yeah, show of hands, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion is approved. Congratulations.
Very much.
So, you can coordinate then with Jim to get the license taken.
Okay, um, where are we at?
New business.
New business. Discussion possible action on Class B beer and liquor license application from Los Habaneros LLC doing business as Fiesta Local Agent Minaj Bakta.
This is essentially a transfer of the license. The business will be ongoing, will be contingent upon all inspections and then the current owners turning in their license. And Finance Committee recommended approval.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion poss- Oh. Discussion of possible action on purchase of streetlight poles and trust arms for the 2017 streetlight projects.
This was budgeted in the 2017 Capital Projects Budget. They went out and obtained two quotes, and Tapco was the low quote, and they're also part of the community's contract, US community's contract, so they're, then could waive the publication of the notification.
Move to approve the contract with Tapco.
Second.
Got motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion of possible action on council rule regarding public input.
I know a couple of the council members have brought this up, just a little history on it. I went back and looked. It was established in 2007, before the council agenda just said, you know, citizens' comments or whatever. And at that time, there were concerns about, there weren't any really, any rules about how long they could talk, and, you know, then another thing that was brought up at that time was political electioneering, that type of thing. And, and I think, and Randy was probably the only one here, I think the mindset was just to, you know, to rein it in a little bit, and, and I think historically since that time, most of the mayors, for the most part, have allowed, you know, when a subject comes up later, you know, they have allowed, and I think the council can, so if there's something on the agenda, someone wants to speak to it, the council can okay that during the whatever. But that's the history, why it was put in was just to, you know, we had politicians coming in, and we had people talking for 10, 15 minutes, and we'd say, well, Jack would try to tell them, well, you know, limit it, and they said, well, there's no rule, and so, that's just a little history on why it was put into place.
And I think the actual rule was based on some-
Uh, City of Oshkosh. Because you have to be careful about making sure with free speech that you're not-
What would we gain, Jim, from?
We would, we would-
It's kind of incongruous, they can talk about something that's not on the agenda, but they can't talk about something that is on the agenda. And it's not well-known, and people aren't comfortable that they can actually speak or ask to speak. They could be denied to speak on an issue that's, that's on the, on the agenda that night, a topic. And I would prefer that they be able to, and- Right away, instead of waiting for the agenda item? Yeah. What's the difference? They're still allowed to speak? Yes, they're, no, they're not. It doesn't state that they're allowed to speak. I think we need to, we need to, we need, if that's the case, and we need to put, make that part of the rules.
It's up to the chair, but you, you need to understand, you don't want to, and you probably are flirting with open meeting laws if you all of a sudden turn every item on the agenda into a public hearing and allowing anyone to say, you know, to speak at that time, so.
How does the county do it? Didn't they say they started doing, was it Roy that said that?
Yeah.
It's, so it's any agenda item?
I've been to, yeah, any, any, anything that's on the agenda or not on the agenda, they have an opportunity to speak.
And whether the person has any interest in it, I mean, like, the applicant, or, you know, is directly involved in the issue, it can be anyone. Is that how they do it?
Right, right. And North Hudson does the same, any item that is or is not on the agenda. Well, they've also added a prayer. I mean, how far do you want to go?
Interesting, they have prayer out there.
Oh.
That's cool.
Do they have a limitation on time?
They didn't mention it. Now, perhaps they do, but I was, I was watching, was watching some of the tapes, and I didn't hear a time mentioned, but.
I was just going to look at a county-
You know, there are, there are-
They ask them to be reasonable.
There are, I don't know, I mean, just because somebody does it one way doesn't make it the right way or the best way. The school board does it a different way, and I don't know if that's right or better or not, you know, I don't know that. I think that from my experience in the year that I've been here, I think that this has worked well. Obviously, we had an issue here, but the people that, that were here, let's just say for the EMS issue, I think this is what, what created this. There were, there were plenty of times that EMS was not on the agenda, and nobody bothered saying a word.
That's right. If it's not on the agenda, if it's on the agenda, then you're, say, yeah, I'm interested in what's on the agenda, and I will have something to say. If it's not on the agenda, that's kind of like, you know, using a negative approach to it. I don't think that, that does not encourage you to come and speak about something that we're not talking about.
I do agree with you though, Jim, that people may not be aware that they can speak perhaps if they want to during, while that item is being discussed, that item that's on the agenda. And perhaps, you know, the compromise on that would be to allow them to, rather to make it known that they, you know, that if they have input, that they want to share, that they can do that.
I mean, we could-
And we've certainly have had exchanges with people in the audience on other issues that have come up and expressed their opinion on different things, that I think the, uh, the, why can't I think of it, the pit, the quarry is one, right? I mean, just, I mean, so we've, we've definitely allowed people to do that, and if it were better known, more widely known that they could do that, I think that that, you're right, I think that would, would-
What you could potentially do is, at the end, or you could put it at the beginning or at the end, because we do have a note that some agenda items may be taken out order, that's always on every agenda. You could put a thing in there at the, you know, whether you want to make it, the mayor or the council may allow public comment during agenda items. I mean, something like, some language like that, would that work?
Yeah, and timing of it would be left to the discretion, I mean, of the chair, just in terms of how we're proceeding through the process.
I just, I just think that it's really important that we listen to the, what the people have to say and make sure that they do have that opportunity, and so, I think that changing the rule is a good idea.
But, you know, but then, as Randy noted, then they're speaking at the time you're discussing the issue. You know, if they speak at the beginning, could be a little disjointed.
I'd rather take it while it's happening, I would much prefer as it's going on during the agenda.
So, maybe Catherine and I can get some language together, and we would make the notification at the end with our other notifications saying, you know.
You know, and it's nice, the, the other thing that I think is compelling is that we can't have any type of discourse with people during public comment, because-
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so, you know, if, if we, if we allow them to talk, we do allow them to talk. If they do talk during, while it's on the agenda, when that item is up, we can have that exchange with them, and we have, we've all done that. So, it just seems kind of awkward that we would have a segment where we can have no exchange with them, and perhaps now they feel that they're done and maybe left, and there are items that we wanted to address with them, something that they may have brought up, and now we don't have that opportunity. So, I, I don't know, I, I-
And I think if you were to keep it, whether it be the council or the chair of the meeting, you know, ultimately, they would have the say, but at least then, that also would then give you as a group or the chair the opportunity, if it's, I don't want to say, if someone's speaking, saying things they shouldn't say, I don't know. Does that make sense?
Oh, and the chair can always control it and keep it on topic, and if it becomes repetitive, then just like at the public hearing, the chair typically says, okay, you know, if, does anyone have anything different to say?
And Jim, in the past four mayors that I've served with, next to limiting time, everybody's had the opportunity to express their opinion out from the audience. So, I think it's the way we communicate that first part to the general public. Because I agree with you, Joyce, they should be able to speak, but, you know, we're here to do the people's business, we got to do the business, and sometimes it gets too long-winded or repetitive, and we're not going to get anything done, unless you want to stay here until 11:00 at night.
So, if that's okay, Catherine and I will put some language together, and then-
Yeah, change it up.
That would be acceptable to me, you know, if it's, if they're aware that they can do that, and the mayor gets to manage the length and content. So, I am, what we're doing is that we've made it easily well-known that they can speak to a topic. They just have to ask for recognition in that process, so, yeah, that's, that works for me.
Okay. Um, all right, so we'll put this on the future agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody good?
Yep.
Uh, let's see. Communication recommendations from the mayor. I've got nothing except for, it was really nice to see everybody take their time out tonight and come back in town from wherever you may have been.
So, we will look at, upon the recommendation.
Yeah, let's not do this next year.
If it's, within a few days of the 4th, we'll, when we do our schedule in September for the following year, we'll work around it.
That's cool.
Like I said, I emailed everybody and said, as John said, he should have said, no, I'm not going to be here.
So, hopefully, everybody had a chance to see the fireworks last night, got rave reviews on them, they were really good, and-
Great crowd.
So, congratulations to the boosters for negotiating that contract, and congratulations to the council for the appropriation for the money. And I hope everybody has a fun and safe 4th of July. Anybody, any?
I just, I will be bringing up liquor license information as we go with the state representatives in our area. And at Public Safety, we will also be looking at EMS funding models, and so, hopefully, we have some- models, and so, hopefully, we have some things to offer the council at the times.
Okay. Anybody else? Kathy, anything?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, so, discussion of possible action on entering into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive for bargaining reasons. Excuse me. Require a closed session regarding the potential purchase of six seventeen Third Street.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to go into closed session. Roll call.
Yes.
Palms?